Okay, we're ready. It's six o'clock, Thursday, February 25th, 2021, and I call our meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Ms. Perkins.
Here.
Ms. Carr.
Here.
Ms. Tines.
Here.
And Ms. Hewlic is absent tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, we need approval of our agenda or amendments.
Madam Chair, may we approve the agenda?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, and it has been second. We need a vote, a verbal.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Ms. Carr?
Yes.
Ms. Tines?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I want to welcome everyone to our school board public hearing. And at this time, I'd like to ask our vice chair, Ms. Tines, to lead us in the pledge and the moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, before we open up our meeting to the public, we have a presentation from our staff.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Thornton.
Thanks for having me.
Good evening.
When we last spoke, we were looking at our budget, going through the various categories. You asked some insightful questions, and I really just wanted to give you an update on some things that took place since then. After speaking with Mr. Coleman, he does a fine job in our facilities. And what he does is he keeps track of planning ahead on systems that may fail, pieces of equipment that may need tending to. So we thought it was wise to try to find a way if we could get additional funds into facilities or maintenance. So I wanted to outline what we've done. We didn't increase the budget. We did not increase the budget, but we moved funds around, and I want to tell you which categories they were moved around from, to get $200,000 into purchase services in the maintenance department. And then we split it between purchase services and supplies.
Okay.
We think it's important because, as a reminder, much of our COVID funds were towards facilities. We don't know where the COVID funds will be next year, so we thought it was a good idea to try to get some of our local funds into facilities. So first and foremost, you might remember the Ameresco debt service payments. We did many energy updates, and we took out a lease purchase to pay that back over several years. Recently, we refinanced that debt. When I plugged in the refinanced payments, which I hadn't plugged those in originally, when I plugged in the refinanced payments, it was actually $72,000 less. So in your debt service, you're spending $72,000 less. So we moved the $72,000 of savings there into facilities and maintenance. You have a dual enrollment, and the instruction team could speak to dual enrollment. It's students going to the local community college. They do get credits, but we pay a tuition fee for that. In looking at our historic trends, we hadn't been paying as much as I had budgeted in that area. So I'm comfortable pulling $50,000 out of that area. That still keeps $100,000 in. If we pull $50,000 out and we drop that into your facilities and maintenance as well. We've been talking this year since I've been here about substitute services. Look, again, there's many lines. Each school departments have their own substitute services line account. So collectively, I believe we will be in fine shape if we remove 50,000 out of collectively, several of them, 50,000 in total into facilities and maintenance. That will still leave about 452,000 for substitutes division-wide. And then lastly, reducing supplies and material in the instructional category to the tune of 27,000. We moved that amount into facilities maintenance. Moving the 27,000 out still leaves, I just want you to know, we're still taking care of the rest of the budget. Still leaves $570,000 into supplies and materials for instruction. So let me summarize. These are the funds that we moved into the maintenance department. $72,000 from your debt service, $50,000 from your dual enrollment, another 50 from your substitute services, and supplies, materials from the instruction, 27,000. So collectively, and I'm estimating these, that isn't even $200,000. Again, the bottom line did not change. We're just reallocating where we think we need the money. Are there any questions on the changes? And the next time you meet, I'll have a new book for you, tabs and everything. I'll have a greater, larger font, and I'll give you a similar book, just realigning those categories. And I can point those out at that time. Secondly, I did hear conversations, Dr. Thornton throughout the community. I did hear that there's concern about new positions, so I wanted to address that. Because if you're hearing about those concerns from the community, I think it's important that you understand the details that are tied to our funding. When we receive our funding, we receive what's called, it's called a standard of quality funding, SOQ. Standard of quality. And the state says, for us to maintain a certain level of quality, a standard of quality, we're supposed to maintain certain numbers of positions that, not instructional positions, but other than operations, administrative, the nursing services, attendance in nursing, technology services, and they list how many positions they feel we should have. We have been under that. And on one side, you might say, well, that's great. We're, you know, we're doing it more efficiently. But where I'm concerned, being as new as I am in what I'm doing, we will have to file a report that counts our people. And my concern is, if we're well under a standard of quality, we jeopardize. I can't guarantee this, but I would be concerned that we're jeopardizing receiving our full funding. It's possible that the state says, and I don't know if they would do this. It's possible the state could say, oh, they're well under, therefore, we don't need to send them the full funding, based on their standard of quality. So I think that's my argument, but that supports any argument against adding these new positions. I think that's extremely important.
So if I can for a second, Steve?
Sure.
So what he's speaking about is we do have to verify every year. We send a report to the state that verifies we spent the money in those categories like they should be spent. And if you want to call it like a huge audit that goes to the state of Virginia. And so we do have to spend it. We do have to show we spent X number of dollars in textbooks, X number of dollars for nurses, guidance counselors, X number of positions. And what he's saying is, he brought it to me in central office, the breakdown under there for like what an assistant superintendent and instructional staff technology, like he shared. We are at the bare minimum right now with those new positions. So, and that's what Steve brought to me. And some of the other stuff with historical data that he's still finding in dual enrollment and the debt service. As Steve continues to dig through that, he's probably going to find more things, plus and minus. We find things plus and minus as we go through.
Of course. So I just wanted to let you know, to me, that does support these additional positions. And now I wanted to speak briefly on the CARES funding. Because this will impact the board in terms of how we spend the funding. We have to apply, put in an application with the state. So there's two grants I want to speak about. One I call CARES. The CARES funding is $529,000. The other funding is $2.1 million. For the $2.1 million, we have to apply for that by April 1st. So I want that grant in, completed before April 1st, in case they kick it back for revisions. I don't want to compromise receiving or getting approved for $2.1 million. The problem is, we can't spend the 2.1 until the 529,000 is spent first. So we, my goal is to spend the 529,000 CARES funding, federal funds, by June 30th. And we have been spending it. There's a balance. So what we would like to do, again, this is from the instructional team, the executive team we met, we will be buying furniture for Windsor Elementary and Carsville to the tune of $235,000. In technology, Mr. Coop Rider's support, we would purchase third-grade Chromebooks with most of the funds for technology. And with the balance, we are looking to have the board approve at the next meeting another technology person to support, as a staff member, to Mr. Coop Rider. So most of it being the Chromebooks, plus the salary till June, I'm estimating would be about $160,000. And then lastly, that leaves about $10,000 for PPE, which I think Mr. Coleman cited today, how much we're spending to keep up on a monthly basis. That might be a month and a half's worth of PPE. I forget the number, what he said, $10,000 worth. So collectively, it's $406,000. 235 for furniture, 160,000 for technology, and then 10,000 for PPE. This grant was applied for, I believe, back in October. We've slightly changed the plan because we got more funding. So what I would like to work with central offices, revising that to align it to what I just told you. Because that wasn't the original plan. So again, furniture, technology, and PPE, we would work with the state system, revise the grant. And then what I'd like to do, in the name of spending that by June 30th, this is the tentative plan for the 2.1 million.
Before you go, they have a question. With the technology, 160,000, that was going to be the Chromebooks and a tech position, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that position, is that one that's going to continue even after CARES money is gone? That's a position we have to maintain?
Very good.
In our budget each year? Is that correct? Because I know some positions that we're talking about is like two-year positions. And it's going to go, you know, some positions would go away when the CARES money goes away.
Is this a help desk position?
So.
Is this a help desk position?
I can answer. So it's the positions that you guys already approved, but we haven't hired yet. We finally have gone through the interview process. So for the rest of this year, we're going to pay that person's position out of the CARES fund that we have for this year's money. And then, yes, ongoing, we'll be funding a tech position in the new CARES money as well.
But when that CARES money's gone, I mean, like?
Right, so we've hired two new techs. So one will be in the regular budget, and one will be in CARES. So after two years, yes, that position could be gone.
Okay.
And I will say, and I know Eric is the one that seems like everyone loves technology. That is the one position, or area in central office, that has more people than required by the state. Although Eric will argue and tell you, and it is true, industry standards for devices per person, we're way under what industry does.
Because just this year alone, with what we've added on, it just blows my mind. The upkeep that they're responsible for, and the help desk, and, I mean, it's helping parents and teachers and some students. So I know they have to be definitely.
And just as, the standards of quality are minimum. So to say that we're at the minimum is a big thing to say because the standards of quality also say, says we need very few APs. In fact, I don't have them in front of me, but many of our schools don't even need an AP by the standards of quality. But we all know we can't run a school without them. So in many other areas throughout the division, transportation, instruction, et cetera, we fund way past the SOQs because we have to, and all schools do. And, but, we all know that in the public's eye, administrators are, we always have too many of them. And we don't. We're at the minimum. And I would say, I'd love to say that, yeah, we could do where with all central office staff, and miraculously, their jobs don't mean anything, and schools would still operate the same way. Everything would be working, and teachers would just show up, and kids would show up, and all the schools would run perfectly without any of their doing, which is crazy talk. So I'm just trying to put it in perspective. We're at the bare minimum of SOQs for central office staff.
So again, I thought it was warranted to go through this with you just because of the dollar amount. It exceeds $2 million. So it's, I call it the CRSA grant, which is Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act. You'll be tested on that at the end of the session. Your allocation is listed, 2.1 million, $2,114,255.79. I don't know why. And then you'll notice these to the right, instruction, administration, transportation, facilities, and technologies. Those are our five main functions. I think one of you asked a question, and we had to get into functions at the last session. So we're required to report to the state our spending based on function. So the cost column going down is the 2.1. But then over to the right, you'll see duplications. So you'll know which function category is that cost falling under. So number one, salaries and benefits. You might remember, we talked about instructional assistants and a speech pathologist. So that first and foremost is coming out of this grant. And this is a grant that we have till the end of September 2023. So that's next fiscal year, '21, '22, and then the following fiscal year, '22, '23. So we have two years to spend this money. We could spend it sooner, but our plan is to not spend it sooner. So Ms. Perkins, I think that speaks a little bit to your question, or who asked the question, about will we keep them? We're certainly keeping them through '21, '22, '23. Then you'll see, we have two reading specialists. I know there was concern expressed by the board. So that's two reading specialists for two years. And that is inclusive of salaries, it's an estimate, salaries and benefits. When we hire the person, we don't know exactly the step. We don't know exactly which benefits they would select, so that's an estimate. Secondly, I'm sorry, thirdly, two math specialists. That's two math specialists for two years each, totaling again about the same 267,000. And again, it's in instruction. Then we have salaries, benefits for a special education coordinator, two years' worth. So that's one person for two years. That does fall under the administrative category or function.
All right, I have a question.
Sure.
So is this one in addition to the one that we talked about in the original budget? That this is, it's not an addition? This is the same one?
Same one.
Okay.
Yes, as are number, the one, row number one, the instructional aid assistance.
Yeah, I knew that.
Yes. What you saw on that one slide, the capsulized CRSA, that's what these are.
Okay.
There's no bait and switch. Now, row number five, facilities, which is ultimately two years' worth of PPE. The thought is, it's justifiable that we would be spending more on PPE, wipes, disinfectant, and whatever we need to get through two school years. I would argue 411,000 wouldn't be enough, but this is certainly going to help us. And then lastly, in answer to the question of the IT person, we're using the smaller CARES funding to get us through June. And then this would kick in for two additional years, to the tune of $116,000. And yes, that's for two years of an IT help desk employee. And you see, it's over to the far right, falls under the technology function. So sooner than later, I'm sharing this with you now because it was just brought to our attention. The application is due by April 1st. This will take us much of March to get the language in, the verbiage, working with instructional team. It won't be as simple as what looks like on this page. We have to get much more in detail for the state to approve it. So our goal is to get this done, I'd say, by the second or third week into March. So there's time to revise if the state kicks it back.
And you guys know, with any federal grant, we can revise throughout the period of the grant if needs change. Because they know a budget's a working document, and it's based on your needs. So, and Susan, you want to talk briefly to the, so the only thing that's changed is the two reading specialists and two math specialists, and then we'll be done.
Yes, so we did add those. We were looking at having two, so, you know, reading specialists would work between two schools. So two of those are two elementary schools with primary. So Hardy, Carrollton, Windsor Elementary, and Carsville. And so we already have interventionists at those schools. And so we would look to what can we supplement with these additional positions? And, you know, we're still looking at data. We know data's going to change a lot. We just brought our kids back five days a week. We hope that that's going to have a positive impact. So we'll be doing another star testing round in April. And so then we hope to really firm up our data of, you know, who are the kids that we're going to be targeting for next year.
Actually, Susan, I think we'll be lucky if we don't need more intervention than what we're going to be able to provide.
You're probably right, but this is definitely a start, and we already have a number of interventionists in each school.
Right, so the way, the way it was presented in our executive meeting was that we already know the students we have every year that are getting pull-up. And so we've counted them with the staff we already have, plus the additional person that we have at Carrollton that's in the regular operating budget. And then have looked at the early data and counted all those students. And that's where we came up with the, like, one person serving two schools. We'd be able to meet those students in that week for pull-up. Because, again, I think Susan shared that last time. We're not just going to keep pulling these kids out of the class. That's not a good practice. And we have to come up with the instructional framework, and how do you increase that and individualize within the regular classroom? And we do that quite well, so. So this is preliminary, and then we'll see. And you see with facilities at 411, that's an area we may have to shift to more personnel. Maybe we won't need 10 instructional assistants. Maybe we'll need more than 10. Who knows? But we have to send the grant in, and now with the data we have, we feel pretty confident with this as our initial plan going in.
And the interventionists that, you know, we're talking about here, we're looking at our tier-three students. The, you know, the students are who have the most need, the greatest need. We know there's going to be a number of students that have deficiencies, but a lot of that's going to have to be accomplished in the regular classroom. And I know I keep saying this, but you can't just pull kids out of their classroom three, four times a day. That's going to be a horrible experience for a child. So what the instructional department is working on right now is, how do we help teachers design and plan for what that might look like? So we are working, we're trying to think outside the box, and we'll be sharing more to come. We're just not ready to do that yet.
Susan, this is what I was talking about the other day. It is, I know over the years, it has been traditional to pull these kids out. But that's not good anymore, just like you said, to pull kids out of classroom. They miss something, okay? And it also have effects on their emotions.
Yes.
Social skills, all sorts of things. And sometimes, a one child, no matter what level they go to, that's the same one that's going to be pulled out because maybe they had some minor disciplinary problems. So I'm going to be pulled out every year, okay? And that happens to some child, some children, and that way they are branded. And that's why I'm against pulling children out when we can use, I'm not saying not to have the specialists there, but I would rather use these funds to bring in more instructional assistants. They can be directly in the classroom and help have hands-on with that child when they know that there's a problem immediately. Pulling a child out, take them to another location, by the time they get back, they forgot it anyway, so half of the time. And then they just come back, you know? They use that pull-out sometimes just for playtime, okay?
Spoken like a true ex-special ed teacher.
Exactly, I was thinking that too.
Which is the least restrictive environment.
That's right.
Which is in the classroom. So we, like I said, we're putting a plan together that will try to best serve the needs of our students.
Thank you.
And that's it, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, at this time, we will begin our school board public hearing for the fiscal year 2021, 2022 school board budget. Okay, the first one we have is Mr. Herb DeGraw.
Madam Chair and board members, thank you very much. I want to commend y'all on hiring this gentleman to my right rear, the new CFO. And the times I've heard him get up and speak, you got somebody that knows what they're doing and isn't afraid to answer your questions. I think back to '95 to 2001, when we had a school board budget that you didn't have to ask a lot of questions about because you had about 60 pages. We even had that still under Ms. Bernetta, and it really did entail digging into it and understanding it yourself. I commend the few of you who asked questions at your previous meeting because I don't see how you can approve this budget without asking more questions. And when you think about it, the budget is no small thing, at 69-plus million dollars. Simply put, if you look at the numbers, applying the KISS principle, the number of students you've had in school years 2019, 2020, and 2021, and what you're forecasting for 2022, the increase is really not justifiable when you apply the KISS principle because you will end up at $12,920 per student on the forecasted numbers. Simply put, you all can get by easily with good cost control management at 67.3 million. I know that might be a shock to some of your system, but then none of you have ever really been involved in cost control management, I don't believe, as being educators. So I suggest that you think about that. Because remember, your fellow taxpayers, many of them in not very good financial positions have to support this budget through their local funds to Holloway County, who then ends up giving it to this board to effectively spend. And I'd suggest you take a strong look at the central office. Because the central office, when you look at the number of people and the almost $3 million in salary and benefits that's spent in the central office and compare it to other school systems. There was an old saying in history about railroads called feather bedding. I think you got feather bedding in the central office with that kind of an expenditure. And how many people have overlapping duties? I guess it's the Marine in me. You have a primary duty, you have a lot of additional duties, and you apply yourself and get them done. So I ask you, to all of you, and Ms. Hewlic, who isn't here, to get into this budget, ask questions, become cost control managers, and reduce this budget to a reasonable amount based upon the number of students. And forecasting 200 less students, that's a minus 3%. That amounts to that two-and-a-half million I was talking about. So thank you very much. Don't envy the job you got to do, but just do it for us, the taxpayers, who've been supporting education in this county since the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeGraw. That's it? That's it? Wow, okay. Does anyone have anything they want to share before we adjourn?
Madam Chair, if you all noticed, we have these little art pieces, all of us, and they were designed by the students of Smithfield Middle School. And we would like to thank them, the staff, as well as the students of Smithfield Middle School for donating these to us. And we would like to thank Mrs. Briggs for informing them about our lifestyles. Thank you.
You knew about my puppy cat. Are you serious?
You knew about my puppy cat. Are you serious? That's awesome. This is really good. I'm very impressed. I mean...
I have my piker, Packer P, and I finished school in 1975, and only Mrs. Briggs would have known that.
Well, they, they are great. This is by Quincy McNeely, and I will definitely have to contact this student to let them know how
I guess I better...
Absolutely wonderful it is.
I have, uh, I hope I'm pronouncing it correctly, Kiara Ventress.
How about you?
Seven Messengale.
Say it again?
Enley Messengale.
How about you, Mr. Wilson? Do you, can you see?
On the back of your frame?
Okay.
You did yours.
Mrs. Tals.
Okay. All right.
Ms. Carver, if you don't mind, I have one last.
Absolutely.
Yeah, on, on the budget. I, I just wanted to make the public aware that we are not asking for any increase in local dollars, actually, $9,000 less. And also, with the 200-plus students less, the state of Virginia has held us harmless and has added actually a million dollars because they understand that we're in a pandemic, and the unknowns of how many students will come back or won't come back. And so, the uncertainty of how we will have to do education in the future, in that increase. And, uh, the budget is also the $2.1 million that the federal government realized we need because of the unknowns of a pandemic. So, we are not in normal times.
Absolutely.
And, uh, I think...
And we haven't sent any teachers home either.
And I think we have done a good job being, uh, fiscal stewards, good fiscal stewards, to our local taxpayers who are not going to have to have any tax increase based on the school budget.
Can I have one more thing I would like to say? I, I think I like to always in our meetings, uh, thank you and our staff. But today, seriously, just listening to the media, when I turn on the TV, and they were talking about, uh, school districts in the region, where they're actually having meetings this week that we had back last year, in, uh, la, maybe, uh, you know, fall or last summer. And they're just getting to this point, and we have, uh, started our children, our students, five days a week from pre-K through 5. And hopefully, eventually, we will have them all back in full-time, five days a week. And, uh, I'm happy about that, and I would like to thank the staff, all of you. I don't care what your job is. I would like to thank you for making that, so it could happen. And, uh, I guess you would say, Alawite County, we've always been that school district, will say, well, hey, nothing else, we're going to step out there on faith. We're going to do the best we can for our students, okay? And, uh, we deal with the issues as we see them. That's it. And that's what we do. As Susan and you all can remember, when we stepped out there with the technology piece. And we had a, a session just like this, Smithfield High School Auditorium, and we were banged that night a little bit. But we knew what was going to be coming in the future. At least, that's what we thought. And I'm glad we went, we took forth an effort to do that for the students, because once Dr. Thornton and his staff said, hey, the governor shut down schools last, a year, all he had to do is say, hey, get those iPads out, get those laptops out, and the kids can do school from home. A lot of the districts, they didn't have those things in place, but Alawite had them in place. And thank you all again.
And actually, based on that, I can't help it, because I do want the public to see, they're going to see the dashboard that we put out that had quarantines for students and then staff, and cases that we've been publishing and running a four-week total. We've added two columns based on being back K through 5, um, five days a week. So, we thought it was important to share with the public that, we said we haven't had student-to-student spread, student-to-teacher, teacher-to-student, and we haven't still. But one thing I want to keep track of is, are we having quarantines based on spread in the school? Meaning, a student had a case, we then had to contact trace, and now, we have quarantine. So, we separate, we're still going to have total amount of quarantines, but now, we're going to have a column of quarantined because of an in-school contact exposure. So, right now, do we have any?
It'll be next week.
It'll be next week when we get that up. So, again, we're going to be using this data as we make decisions in the future. So, as you see these columns added, or the public sees it, that's why we're doing it. We want to be as tran, transparent as we can and show, has the spread come from the outside and we're quarantined? Or did the spread actually have an inside and we're quarantined? Because that really matters to whether we close a classroom, school, et cetera. So, we'll be sharing that next week.
Okay. Sounds great.
Yes.
No one has anything else? Our meeting is...